Good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome to the Town of Stowe, August eighth, twenty twenty-three Select Board meeting.
Welcome to.
Our first order of business, public comment, if there is, actually I can't do that. I'll have to wait because our pilot is coming back in a moment.
Oh, do you want me to?
Um, do we have any board member comments?
None at this time?
No.
Let's take the, uh, the appointment of Brian Hatch to the position of Superintendent of Streets through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
There's a letter.
There's a letter.
There's a letter, a recommendation. You could read that into the record.
Yeah, so from the town administrator, I am thrilled to recommend Brian Hatch to the position of Superintendent of Streets. Brian has been a hardworking, dedicated employee of the town for twenty-six years and is ready to take the next step in his career. Over the last six months, Brian has continued to prove his readiness for the superintendent's position and has the support of his department. Having Brian as the superintendent will bring knowledge, experience, and stability to the highway department. I respectfully ask for your ratification of this recommendation, Denise. So we, I will dispense, I won't read the posting of your position.
What lots of readers there?
Uh, would you like to say anything about?
I would, I'd like really to, there's a lot of people to thank, so I'll try to generalize, keep it brief for you so you can move along with, uh, you know, I'd like to thank the board for the recommendation and hopefully you all say yes. We're not there yet, but hopefully you all say yes. You know, I want to thank the guys that showed up to support me, it was a nice little surprise there. And, you know, we got a great crew of guys, they're a great bunch of guys, they do a great job and they make me look good. I know I've said that before in the past, but they ultimately make me look good. And can't thank them enough for what they do and dedicating their time to the town as well. I'd like to thank everybody in the other departments that I've worked with as the assistant and in the transition period, they've been, seems as though it's been seamless. Working with them and I want to thank them for all of their support and all the departments in the building. Fire Department, Police Department have been wonderful to work with. We've got a lot of good relationships with all the departments and it seems to go fairly well and I appreciate their support and the work that we've done together. And, you know, I'd like to thank Denise and Dolores, they've been very supportive in this transition, they've been very supportive in me. And they've been very helpful with any opinions I might have needed from them and maybe a little guidance here and there. And it's nice to know that I know that I can always go to them and it's nice to know that I know that I have all these other networks to utilize to try to make my job easier also. And lastly, I'd like to thank Tracy, the other half, for her support and all the years of the phone ringing at two o'clock in the morning and getting woken up and thank you, you know, I appreciate you. I appreciate all of you, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So any comments from the, questions from the board?
I'm excited for you to keep, keep on keeping on.
Thank you. Yeah, I hope to keep on keeping on like I have and make you just as proud and serve the town like I have.
Full compliment, Sydney.
Thank you.
Probably know it better than anybody.
I forget a lot too.
I know. I'm ready for motion.
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Brian Hatch to the position of Superintendent of Streets for the Town of Stowe through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Can see the town clerk to be sworn?
Was that be Linda or Deb?
Do it in front of the whole town.
How did you get the longer?
Really? I don't have, I don't have my glasses.
But I'm gonna read it to you, you can repeat it. I.
I, Brian Hatch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the bylaws of the Town of Stowe.
To uphold the bylaws of the Town of Stowe.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And perform the duties of the Superintendent of Streets.
And perform the duties of the Superintendent of Streets.
Of the Town of Stowe.
Of the Town of Stowe.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities. Appreciate it. Mike, you're gonna probably have to help me out with these logs.
So returning to.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, you guys for coming, that was so great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Returning to our out of order agenda, if there is public comment, I will take it now. Please state your name and address for the record and limit comments to two minutes on any topic that is not on our agenda.
Oh, yeah.
See none.
See no hands.
Uh, we will. Move to the recognition of Ty and Julie Marancy, Taylor Road residents who responded to the July twenty-three, twenty twenty-three plane crash. Hi there.
Hi.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
Thank you for inviting us.
Absolutely. So.
They're on the.
Tonight we are recognizing Ty and Julie Marancy from Taylor Road for their heroic actions on Sunday, July twenty-third, responding to a plane crash in their yard. We have several folks who wish to take part in this recognition, so I will ask Chief Salise to look in.
Thank you. So usually every time we're up here, it's for one of our officers that have done something above and beyond. But tonight, it's a special night because we get to recognize two residents of Stowe that stood up and went above and beyond for their neighbor. You know, they had a terrific plane crash in their yard and they didn't, didn't wave at all and they went right to the danger, which, you know, we always ask people, you know, to call us, but you guys stepped up and did what you thought was appropriate at the time. And I wanted, and all the public safety in the select would really wanted to recognize the fact that you guys did something special and did something well beyond that we could ever have hoped for. You guys started the whole chain of life that really ended up in a successful rescue of these individuals. And we're just so proud and we want to make sure that everybody is aware of how, how we feel about that. So from the Police Department anyway, I, I have a policy that I actually, that we give you guys a certificate of commendation and a letter. And I don't know if you can see this on the Zoom. So you guys, we'll make sure that we get this up to you, as well as a combination ribbon that will, I don't know if you can, again, Zoom. We'll make sure that you guys get these. And like I said, I'm extremely proud and it shows what kind of residents we have here in Stowe. And so thank you very much for everything that you did on that day, even after, and allowing us to continue to be on your property and really invade your space for a couple of days. So, no, thank you very much and you guys really are the, were the key that started, that turned everything going forward, so thank you very much, you guys are amazing. So that's from Police Department. Thank you.
And I invite Chief Tannoy to say a few words.
Good evening. Just to echo on the police chief's side, what you did at that, at that time of the incident was very valuable to the incident. As you know, nine-one-one is very important, when people call nine-one-one with information, lifesaving measures take place. Even before the apparatus arrived, we had already called for helicopters, we had already called for additional ambulances from the information that was provided from the scene. So on behalf of the Fire Department, we have a certificate of recognition, is presented to Julie and Ty in recognition for extraordinary courage and lifesaving actions provided to the occupants of the July twenty-third, two, twenty twenty-three aircraft incident. We don't call them crashes. Signed by the town administrator and myself. And also as a token appreciation for the actions, we do have challenge coins, firefighter challenge coins that we'll present to you as well when we see you. So on behalf of the Fire Department, thank you for your actions. As a result, the scene went very well for life safety, so thank you.
Now, on behalf of State Representative and Speaker Pro Tempore Kate Hogan, I would like to present a citation from the House of Representatives to Ty and Julie in recognition of your immediate response and assistance to the passengers and pilot of a plane incident near your home in the Town of Stowe. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. And so that is this.
The owl.
Yeah.
There you go.
Wow, thank you.
And finally, on behalf of the Select Board and community at large, we present you with this plaque in grateful recognition of your brave and selfless actions on July twenty-third. Your unhesitating, immediate, and heroic assistance to the crash victims before public safety personnel could arrive on scene was instrumental in bringing in the pilot and passengers to safety and demonstrated exceptional courage and concern for others. We are proud to have you as residents in Stowe and recognize you for being true community heroes.
We, we were just so amazed, a lot kind of was blurry that day, but we were just so amazed at how quickly everybody arrived and how well everyone worked together. We know they were different first responders from different towns and, you know, we follow all of them on Instagram and they're always talking about how they helped other towns and other towns came and helped and it was just so incredible to see how quickly everybody responded and worked together and we would have done what we did what anybody else would have done and there you are. And so we don't feel like we did anything worthy, but the first responders were incredible and just the follow-up afterward. You know, Chief Salise coming over and checking in on us and another one of the officers coming over the other night in the pouring rain to check on something and, you know, we, we're, we just feel so blessed to live in this town, we have kids who go to school here and everything about Stowe is amazing. So we're, we are the lucky ones and we're just so grateful that the passengers are going to be okay, that really is our main, we're so grateful for that. So we should be honoring all of you, I mean, you deserve all of the praise, so, but it means a lot to, to be invited to this, we're sorry we're not there in person, yikes. But thank you so very much, thank you, this is beyond, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will be sure to get you all of the goodies that have been presented this evening.
Is there a parade coming by in a few minutes?
Yes. Yes, that is the next step.
We're gonna keep a low profile from now on.
Don't do that, that's no fun. Thank you. Next we have, let's have the town administrators for.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a few quick items this evening, I, most of you have seen the notes on our door and on Facebook, but this building will be closed tomorrow from twelve to two, as I'm having an employee appreciation lunch. Other buildings will be alternating coverage, so employees may attend or providing volunteer coverage. So just so folks know, we will be closed here from twelve to two. There have been many inquiries lately, and I'm not sure why, if something new has changed, but about Bose. There has been no movement on the property. The planning director and I have had several meetings with Bose personnel and they are actively marketing their property, but it's been for sale all along. The private school, to my understanding, is still very interested, but they've had issues securing funding. So Bose is just looking for someone, anyone, to take the property off their hands, but nothing has changed, nothing has happened. They keep us in, we're actually in very good communication with them now. So if anything does change, I will be sure to let folks know, but there's been no movement, nothing has changed with that property. And then I will be on vacation next week. That is it this evening.
Great, thank you. Next we have an event permit for the Stowe Firefighters Association Touch a Truck on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Hi.
Yeah, so Saturday, August sixth, twenty twenty-three at Bose, we have an event permit, pretty much the same thing as last year. We started reaching out to different groups and agencies, seeing if they want to participate. We've secured some already, one of them actually being one of the helicopters from the plane incident. They should be there as long as they don't have any other things going on. So we have a handful of stuff already planned, already scheduled as far as people coming. Nothing too crazy in the event permit, no fireworks, no a lot of music. And Bose was gracious enough to let us use that parking lot again.
That's great. Any questions from the board? I know this was a really, it was a great event last year, right, you had a big turnout.
Yeah, so we're hoping ETL brought a different truck last year than they did the first year and we're hoping to bring something else and see if they can go even bigger. As big a truck as it was.
I'm sorry I missed the earlier one, so I have no comparison.
Did you get five hundred people last year, close to it?
I don't know. It was hard, so two years ago was the first time we changed it over from like a wash the fire truck day to a touch a truck. And the community's same parking lot filled up within the first five minutes and stayed full throughout the event. Being at Bose with a larger parking lot, it was hard to tell how many people we had. But it felt like we had a pretty steady flow of people throughout the entire event.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I can say I've attended the last two and I definitely think Bose had a larger crowd, there were many more displays, I guess, because of the space, but there were a lot of people there last year.
Cool, that's great.
That's really great.
You're doing this rain or shine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I can actually say that Eric is the first one that has gotten every requirement in before you meet. So they do not have any outstanding items with us.
Good job.
Getting down to it, see, we got the food permit, talked to Bose, got the insurance.
Yep, that's great. Well, let's have a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a permit to the Stowe Firefighters Association Touch a Truck on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three from ten AM until two PM pending receipt of all necessary permits.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
You want me up there?
Yes, where would you like to?
Hot seat.
Hot seat.
How are you all doing?
Doing well.
Great. So thank you for making time for me on your agenda. I just thought that, you know, you've done your town meeting review and I've done my town meeting review with Lisa, Denise, Linda, others. And I thought before we head into the next one, maybe we should at least share any important conclusions. I've got a few things I can summarize. So Linda makes sure that as many people as possible fill out town meeting feedback forms, I don't know if you're aware of those, and we got a lot of them. I can summarize the comments, there was a lot of appreciation for kids' town meeting, but I, I think a lot of people who were in kids' town meeting were filling them out, but that was a good event and I do think it boosted turnout a bit. The other comments sort of fell into three buckets. One was, you gotta do something about the sound system. The other, and there's really no doubt about that, we have problems with the sound system. Changes that we're making going to center should address most of that. The sound system at center has historically been very good. The problems that we had before were the people on the stage had problems hearing. A recent improvement may address that, we tested it. I'm not that worried about it, if I have to wear the assistive hearing device to make sure I hear, I'll do that. Obviously, there were comments about the clickers. And a lot of people made the comment of, you ought to test them ahead of time, and I just want to, I know it's been said before. They were tested and Friday, they worked, I can't explain it. I was, I didn't do the testing, but I was there, I was a fake voter at the back of the cafeteria. I was pressing the button and my fake vote was being registered. Something about changes that were made overnight and I think just the volume of people actually showing up changed it. Being in one location, which I think Denise will talk about, may help that tremendously. The third comment obviously was about the length of town meeting and, you know, six and a half hours is grueling for anybody. Basically what people said was, if you're gonna have a warrant, either, either don't have a warrant with sixty-eight articles, split it up, have a fall town meeting, manage that. Or if you're gonna do that, make sure you have food and a break. I can't disagree with that. There are more possibilities at center with food. But that brought something to mind to me, something that I wanted to just say to you and make sure you knew. Something that I didn't know when I was on the Select Board, that I only really realized when I became moderator. Which is that the Select Board does have complete discretion over the warrant, except for petition articles. In theory, you can say, no, that's not getting on the warrant, which is obviously a very difficult thing to say to anyone, any board. But you have the ability to say, no, not spring, fall, or vice versa. When I was on the board, that was never made very clear. I was kind of worried, I always sort of wondered exactly what authority we had. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. And I will leave it to you and to Denise to figure out how to use that kind of authority, if at all, and how to plan for some sort of a break and/or food. Those are the main comments that I got from people.
Denise?
So in regards to those comments, for the special town meeting and potentially going forward, we will be using Center School. The cafeteria, auditorium, gymnasium space has a capacity of eleven hundred people, all in one space. We've met, we've walked the site, we've worked with facilities. We have a way to set up the checkers, so they're in the same room, we don't need an alternate set of equipment in the, you know, a cafeteria, which requires the clickers in a different location, which was really the problem with the clickers at the annual. Everyone in the auditorium worked, it was the cafeteria that we were having problems with. So we will have everyone in one space, we, it will account for the large number that we anticipate attending. The school is working on the sound system, there is one currently in the, what I'll call cafeteria space and a completely separate system in the gymnasium. The twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one town meetings, the sound was not working, we had portable speakers. The school has brought in a company, they've reviewed it, they think they can fix it, they're actually coming out on Friday to connect the two systems to one another, so all speakers in that same space will hopefully work. And I think having everybody there, and it's a cafeteria auditorium, so people can eat. So if people do want to bring snacks, hopefully our special town meeting will not be long enough to need snacks. But going forward, if we have a town meeting, again, six and a half hours is a bit crazy. But people could bring, you know, soda, caffeine, coffee, anything to sort of get them through whatever length of time the town meeting is. The downsides, obviously, is we have to do the entire setup, we don't have hail, we can walk in and their seats are already set up. We have to actually, I'm renting chairs for the special, I've recruited the fire chief and the boy scouts to set up chairs for us. But we have to do all of that work around the school's schedule, because unlike hail, hail can shut the auditorium down, we can have all day if we need to. This is their gym, their cafeteria, their extended day program. So we're working with that, we're working through that with the school currently. There's potential to set up half of it after lunch and then potentially they may relocate the extended day program that day for us, so that we can set up earlier than, you know, say four o'clock. We will be putting out, Linda and I will be working on a formal press release with details for the special. More particularly, check-in, we want to encourage folks to get there early, we do expect large crowds, so check-in is essential. We will be asking folks to have their license out, because we can scan them with the poll pads, we're not collecting data, it's just an easier way for us to register folks and get that line moving. The moderator has said he's plans to start at seven o'clock, so we want people there to be ready. You know, granted, there'll be some pomp and circumstance at the beginning and presentations, but we can't wait if there's a line down the street. So there, there are only seventeen articles and the last one is just the generic election article, so sixteen articles. Ideally, the first two are gonna generate the most conversation. So I think we've addressed the, the issues, we have five hundred clickers, Linda, are ours?
Are five hundred are ours.
Five hundred, we have borrowed Sterling's clickers, so we have about nine hundred and sixty currently and we are looking to acquire about two hundred more, so we have eleven hundred clickers ready, tested, and available to use. Ron, our IT is, actually has been setting things up in the basement to actually start checking all the clickers. We are having additional batteries on hand, so that any issue like that, we can try and proactively deal with. Now, if we continue to have problems, then we need to look at something else, because all in one space, one set of antennas. If we still have issues, then I think we need to look at the system in general and see what needs to be updated. But we are addressing the major concerns. Jim and I today met with the kid town meeting folks and they do plan to run babysitting service. And I call it that because they're not planning activities, it really will be sort of a daycare babysitting in the library at center. You know, more of just a place that kids can be while their parents vote and then the expectation is a lot of them will get up and leave after the first article, but they will be making arrangements for that as well, so.
And we're even gonna have, in the case of emergency where none of the clickers work, we'll have tellers who could, if we need to do a hand count, we could do that like the old days and even if, God forbid, the clickers don't work and somebody moves to receive their ballot and it passes, we'll be ready to do it if we have to, right?
Yes, I will say when we pass out, people check in and we're passing out the clickers, we will be handing them a voter card, a colored card. So they already have that in case they have to do, raise their hand, so it's easy to see.
I just want to emphasize again, the town meeting will start at seven PM, whether there are people in line or not. And I am sure that there will be enough speechifying, including my own, that anybody who's in line will have plenty of chance to get to a seat before any real substance starts, but we're gonna, I can't ask people who showed up on time to wait for those who were tardy, so.
Imagining there'll be a presentation by the school committee or school building committee.
Yes, I mean, I intend to, we haven't, I haven't had a conversation with them, I intend to ask them to limit that to no more than fifteen minutes. This is not the time for education, this is a time to be able to answer questions and make a decision and discussion, but not education. And fifteen minutes is an eternity in this.
Especially if you're waiting a month.
Yeah. I just want to make a comment about the parking, the people, to get there early, I think there's only about a hundred spaces for the Center School, but then they have parking all Hartley Road and up around Hale, there's parking at Town Building, parking at, along Common Road and all through there, so, I mean, there'll be issues and stuff. So people definitely will be ready to start checking in, at least by six o'clock, if not earlier. There'll be more info in our press release and in the townwide mailing and the Stowe Independent, when the warrant goes to everybody, we'll have info there too.
Great.
Yes, we have reserved both buildings, both parking lots, Hale and Center are fully. Both parking lots, Hail and Center are fully reserved for us that night. Actually, two nights if we, God forbid, need to go a second night. But we have everything reserved so that if there's some situation or just parking concerns, we have as much covered as we could.
We think we've got it all locked down, but there could always be somebody that accidentally shows up from out of town and uses Wallfield unexpectedly, but we're shutting it. All for the town meeting attendees.
Do you have any questions for me? Good. Well, thank you.
Thank you for all that effort.
Sure. Thank you.
Primary speaker.
Yes, but I want, I want those unmuted, please.
Well, will the chair, do you want me to unmute the whole committee?
My request is to unmute the whole committee because they will be answering questions.
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us here to run you through the articles. We have, what, 10 articles, but again, they're gonna be, a lot of them should run very quickly as they did in the, in the annual town meeting. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna provide just a brief summary of what the changes are and maybe a little bit of the why. Many of the articles, as they did in the annual, have multiple parts. But again, the vote will be for the whole article, not just an individual part. My question to the board is how you would like me and the committee to run through these? Do you want section by section, change by change? How would you like me to conduct our discussion?
Tonight or at town meeting?
Tonight.
Oh, I'll leave that up to you, of course.
Tonight.
We have a number of questions on.
I may recommend, if you go by the article, because they have the articles in front of them, so.
And then given the article. So article, we start with Article Four. And that article is regarding the moderator. And the main reason for the changes here are just some clarity and simplification. What we have found in going through the charter is many times, different topics were talked about in many places. And what we're trying to do is simplify it so that when we talk about a particular thing, it's in one area. So the change under the presiding officer is just that the moderator presides over the town meeting. And should there not be a moderator, then the deputy moderator takes over. And should there not be a deputy moderator, the town clerk. And if there's no town clerk, you go to Master of Law. So again, it just kind of clarifies, no changes. Section 210, Rules of Procedure. It just outlines that the moderator, from time to time, may establish some procedural rules for conducting town meetings. So it just kind of clarifies that. It's been done in the past, but it just clarifies that. Section 35, mainly Section C. This is where we really wanted to clarify the deputy. Because when we were talking about it, at sometimes it felt like if it was a rainy Tuesday and it was Friday and we're standing on our head, then we had a deputy moderator for a certain amount of time. So we really clarified it to say the deputy moderator serves for a year. And we didn't have to worry about whether there were other town meetings involved. It's, they're appointed at the town, at the annual town meeting and they will serve until the next town meeting and a deputy moderator is appointed. It just clarified and made it much easier to determine, yep, the deputy moderator's there for the year. And then just clarification on appointments. What the, who the town moderator appoints. So those are the changes to Article Four. So any questions?
I want to just clarify, are you questioning, Megan, the sections that are listed?
I just don't have, there are like a couple of different things that are five and, like.
I'm working off of the draft that Denise sent.
Question?
Go ahead.
Are these appointments changed at all, or just clarified?
Is Dave on? I do not think so. Do you know, they didn't change, did they?
They were previously scattered throughout the charter, so the thought was to bring them all together.
All in one place.
So there isn't a change in the appointments. It's just all in one place.
Reorganization, correct. Anything else on Article Four?
I think that the moderator's appointments for the Finance Committee and Capital Planning, those are in general bylaw. They're in, I didn't, I don't think they're in the charter, but you're adding them.
I did not think we added anything.
I thought those were added.
I'll verify. Dave's not, Dave did this section. I'll verify.
I think they're referenced in the charter.
I think they are too. I think Finance Committee for sure.
Yeah, I thought Finance Committee was absolutely in there. We'll double check.
Because I'm thinking if they're not there already, that adding them to the charter isn't necessary if they're already in the bylaw.
Right. A lot of times it's just kind of clarity too, that they're in one place, but we'll get back.
Right.
We'll let you know.
24B, Finance Committee, there shall be a Finance Committee that members of which shall be appointed. Number of members, term of office, blah, blah, blah. And it talks about how their terms shall alternate. So it does say, I think in the charter, I appointed them.
So anything else on Article Four? Pretty, pretty clear. Article Five, main change was regarding investigations. There is no change, the fact that the Select Board still has the ability to make investigations. What we, what we're recommending is the elimination of publishing the report. Because at one point it says, a report summarizing the results of such investigation shall be printed in the next annual town report. What we didn't want to have happen is somebody has an issue with a person, they had an investigation and found innocent, but the report was published. So it was really around privacy. Investigation still is available. And we also added that the Select Board or Town Administrator may also use outside help should you need it for an investigation. So the big thing was just making it, you know, keeping privacy in mind should, should somebody not be found guilty of that issue.
Kathy Kono has a comment.
No, no, I just wanted to be, I was in my car and now I'm at the house.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. So anything else on Five? Pretty, pretty simple there.
Nope.
Okay. All right. Section Six, Town Administrator. Again, the majority of the changes here are for clarification and simplification. The Section 41, it's interesting that what is initially there is the Select Board can appoint the Town Administrator for undisculp, no definite amount of time. So, and in indefinite term. So what we've done is we've said, just to establish by the contract that the Select Board, so if the Select Board negotiates in the contract that it's going to be a five-year term, then that's what it is. So again, keep clarity. Section 42H, we just changed proposals to policies because it's the Select Board policies for rental versus proposals, just a kind of a different word. In Section 44, Acting Town Administrator, the main thing that we wanted to do is to give the Select Board a little more flexibility should a town administrator be out for an extended period of time, more than 90 days, knowing that the town administrator is coming back and that we want the town administrator to come back. Currently, it said 90 days and that was it. And what we're saying is it could be renewed for an additional 90 days. So to just give you a little more flexibility to say, got it, and we'll move it on.
Makes sense.
Section 46, Selecting a Town Administrator. What's interesting is two people who are on the selection committee, Karen Meyer and myself, it was interesting to, we talked quite about this. Again, it's clarity. In the third paragraph down, it's not more than 30 days following the appointment. We're saying not 30 days following the appointment of the committee versus the posting of the job or the notification that a town administrator is leaving. Because we have no control over that and we were under the gun to get the days we need. So we want 30 days or, I should say, the town moderator will have 30 days following, I'm sorry, no, 30 days following the appointment of the committee that we start our work. The other thing we've added in is, again, the Select Board chooses the town administrator. Or you could reject them all and the committee starts again. The other thing was, we were very fortunate because we had a lot of time. We knew quite ahead of time that our previous town administrator was going to retire. We may not have that luxury. We may have a very short timeframe. So what we're saying is we barely made the 180 days. It was a very, very aggressive schedule. So what we're recommending is that we have longer, if need be, where the committee has longer than 180 days, should that be needed to find a town administrator. So again, just really clarity to give the Select Board some additional ability for an assisted town administrator and also for finding a town administrator.
For when I give my two-week notice.
That just scares the shit out of us. But anyway.
You have a question?
Yes. This is just picking you. Why did you choose 30 days following the appointment of the committee? Was there, based on your experience?
It was 30 days anyway. We just said following. We just made the change. It was initially not more than 30 days following notification of a vacancy or pending vacancy in a town administrator. We just kept it 30 days following the appointment of the committee. So the 30 days we just kept.
We just kept. So I'm just wondering, had there been any discussion about making it sooner? Because as you identify, the appointment of the committee may take some time, which is what put you under the gun last time. So should that 30 days be shortened? And I know you guys have deliberated this and it's, I appreciate all the work you've done. It's just a question in terms of timing, could that be moved up to 21?
And that's why it says not more than 30 days. So it can be less.
It can be less. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, just not, not more than.
That's fine.
Okay.
I would actually comment, if you are looking at that, I mean, I think you may even want to consider making it longer because it may take 30 days to, you know, get folks on board. If it's the summer, you have vacation schedules. I mean, I would look at, you know, potentially having some flexibility on that. Maybe it should be a not more than a, another, I mean, we know how difficult it is for folks to schedule meetings sort of on the fly, but I would look to shorten it.
Time is of the essence.
Time is of the essence, especially when we don't, when it's not a retirement. And it might be a retirement, but if it's not a retirement. I'm saying it's not gonna be. All right. Anything else on Article Six? All right. Article Seven, AKA Master Plan. The main change was to clarify that the Master Plans is primarily the responsibility of the Planning Board, according to Master of Law. So we really cleaned up to do that, as well as revising the membership and the appointment process. It's been a challenge now to get the current board, the current Master Plan Committee staffed. So one of the things we discussed was changing the process to be five rather than seven. And that membership can change based upon what the current thought was around the Master Plan. Was it more heavy on this way versus that way? So Kathy, do you want to add any tidbits to that?
No, we had a lot of discussion about this, trying to kind of reach consensus on what folks would be supportive of. I think there was the sense that specifying, you know, it has to be the ConCon, the Board of Health, the Finance Committee. Some of those committees have had trouble finding somebody to serve on Master Plan. And the Planning Board has had this idea of having more of a living Master Plan. You know, maybe they're just updating the Housing and Economic Development section. So maybe you want to have a membership that's more heavily composed of those interests. And then the thought was that those at-large members that weren't members of other committees would be jointly appointed by the two boards.
And there is a typo. I don't know if you caught it. It says elect board, not select board. In Section 7-7, Item C. Right here.
Oh, thank you.
Spell check would not catch that.
So any other questions regarding that?
I do recall that this was a lot of discussion, so I appreciate that you guys came up with a recommendation on that.
Sorry, I had a quick question and I can't remember where we landed. Were we talking about changing a Master Plan to Comprehensive Plan?
We talked about it. We're not currently changing it and.
What we're doing is, and it's one of the next articles that we'll come to in the definition section of the charter, we're saying a Master Plan may also be Comprehensive Plan. But right now, state law calls in a Master Plan, so we've heavily referenced it.
Okay, that makes sense. Yep, thank you.
We'll see in a minute, huh? I've seen, I've gone through this so many times, it's a blur. Article Eight, Removals and Suspensions. Again, it's really some clarification. We wanted to make sure to clarify that it was for an appointed member, not an elected member, because it's a different process for elected. And to make sure that whatever we do follows applicable laws. And the other thing is pretty much the removal of, under Section 54, bullets B and C, because again, we want to protect the privacy. That it's, we don't need to make a, you know, a grand statement of things. You go through it, but just kind of protecting privacy. So that's pretty much the elimination of B and C was for simplification and privacy. Okay? And Kathy Kono, anything you want to add?
No, no, just we had compared a lot of other town charters. And it's a similar mindset that, you know, if there's a dispute, it should be private, not a public hearing. Also, if they're only appointed for a fixed time, these provisions don't apply to them. They don't get certified notice and things like that. They just run their term and that's it.
Any questions there?
Nope.
All righty. Article Nine, the Select Board Appointments. Again, just a general update of eliminating things that were no longer the, for example, the Assistant Town Administrator to the Board of Selectmen. The Select Board is not appointing that. The big one that we're going to figure out on Town Meeting Floor is the Board of Cemetery Trustees. Right now, because we don't know, we're leaving that. And there were some recommendations by Town Council to leave it and deal with it should that other article pass. So that is just kind of a general cleanup. Same thing with Superintendent of the Streets. We're just waiting to see what happens with that article. So it's just some basic cleanup. And of course, we know that as soon as we put together a list, it goes out of date at some particular time. But these are the main, these are the main things. We talked about not having a list, but we went back and forth and said, no. Most of the charters did have them, so we figure we'll have them and, you know, it's the best, it's the best picture right now. Okay?
So I noticed you added full-time firefighting. I know we've, maybe this is just me not understanding, but I know we've appointed call firefighters too. Are they full-time? So is this then a change? We wouldn't be appointing call firefighters.
Okay.
Yes, so, and we've talked about this, most of it came to Public Works or Highway Department. But the issue's been the same with the Fire Department, that sometimes scheduling and having board meetings, especially when it's call or per diem, we need to get them on the department much sooner than waiting for a scheduled meeting, so.
That makes sense to me.
Right. So this would allow Dolores and I, with the department head, to make those appointments and then they wouldn't have to. But for ceremonial purposes, it's nice to still have the full-timers come here and be appointed by you.
Anything else on Article Nine? Okay, Article Ten. Big change was just to ensure that we were in compliance with the open meeting laws in terms of reposting. Some affirmation of boards, votes being based on the number of people in the room, not the number of people, not the actual number of people that are on a board. So if, as long as there's a quorum, it's gonna be based on the people in the room, not the total number of boards. And just highlighting that, you know, an annual reorganization of all committees and boards. But do you want to make the notation, it's a reorganization, there's no need and no requirement to change any members. So if the membership wants to stay the same, if the officers want to stay the same, more power to them. It just says annual reorg. Kathy, you want to add anything?
I guess I just want to emphasize the voting issue. So right now, the charter actually says that in order to be a valid vote, the vote has to be a majority of the full multiple-member body. the vote has to be a majority of the full multiple-member body. So if you all have five members and only three are present, to be a valid vote, all three would have to vote unanimously. That's what the charter says, but in practice, I don't think that that's what most boards and committees are doing. So we didn't want that to be, in Karen's words, kind of a gotcha, where somebody said, oh, that wasn't a legitimate vote. So now it will be what is generally considered the practice by the state is majority of those present and voting.
Where is that on here?
That's in Section 7, 8.
D's?
Since D and E.
Oh, that's what it is. You crossed it out.
Yeah.
I understand now. Okay, I was looking for it. I did look at the cross-out, got it, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right. Article 11. This is, so this is recall. And to date, we have not had a recall, luckily. But should we do? In conversations with the town clerk, we just felt that some of the time, the timing was just a little, a little too aggressive, that it really put her under the, he or she under the gun. So it's just clarifying instead of two, two business days, five and a few other things. Karen Meyer, are you on? Yes.
I am.
Would you like to add anything to this article?
No, I think, I think you're right. It is an attempt to modernize it, to make it a little bit more realistic and to make it easier to work with if we received a petition for both the town staff and also for the petitioners, so that the, the requirements would be clearer.
Okay. All right, so anything else on 11? All righty, 12 are the definitions and there's three changes. You would not believe the amount of time we spent on town bulletin board. So we have, it was like, why do we need a bulletin board? We just want the website. So what we have, what we are proposing is the town bulletin board will now be defined as the place designated by the Select Board for posting notices required by, by, required by bylaw, charter, constitution or general law, and any other locations designated by the Select Board from time to time. May also be referred to as the Official Bulletin Board. So there you have it. The next one, the change of A to H, we ended up with two As. So we made voter H, so that's what that is. And to your, to your question, Megan, there's the Master Plan.
Okay.
Have a question? Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
Why was it changed from the town clerk to the Select Board?
She sat in a meeting and didn't want it.
You just didn't want to deal with it. Do, do we want to pick this up, guys? I'm sorry.
I'm glad to, I'm glad to make the decision, but it's, you know, it's, I think it's a, more of a responsibility of the Select Board and it's a bigger group and a more of a say and probably has more oomph to it.
Yeah.
For lack of another term.
Okay.
More formal.
I think the committee felt like it was a policy decision for the town.
Okay.
And it was that it should happen in a public forum where people could comment. And I, I think there are advocates for making the website the Official Bulletin Board and there are advocates for keeping the current board. And there are pros and cons of both.
So as a follow-up, I'm anticipating these will be approved in September. We then have to take action in that, no?
No, we don't.
No, because I was about to go to the.
We have to vote on it in May. The changes to.
Ballot questions. These are all will be ballot questions. These changes show up as ballot questions.
So you're still on this, correct?
I'm not going to change.
Well, no, I know, but I'm just thinking, I, we need to understand when we're responsible for doing this.
It's not going to be for a while.
None of the charter changes from May nor September go into effect until after the ballots in May. And only those that the voters approve then get implemented.
And that the AG approves of.
So far, the AG has approved all of the ones from May.
Correct.
Right, so there's multiple steps, so you don't have to worry yet.
Okay. I remember that discussion, at least, and I was like, my, my hair was on fire. I'm gladly turning it over.
All righty, and the last one, Article 13. There's two, two different components. One of them is the budget in terms of having 60 days. Sorry, no, budget is, budget is 30 days rather than 60 days to give the town administrator a few extra days to make sure, in particular, all the school numbers are in. So that was, that's Section 6.2. And 5.1. Which, which of the, which of the Kathys is this one?
This one is me.
I'm 6.2.
Okay.
This basically just gets rid of the requirement for publication in the newspaper, of general circulation in the town. Because what we're seeing in all of the towns around us is they have no more newspaper of general circulation in the town. We are lucky, but we don't know that we will always have one. So we're seeing towns having to publish in the Boston Globe and pay these exorbitant, you know, legal ad costs.
Yep, so 6.5.1 is no newspaper, 6.2 is giving the town administrator additional time to secure the budget.
Then also that will be publication on the bulletin board, not the newspaper.
Right, not in the newspaper.
Right.
Got it.
Sorry, I've got a question. Since we're changing the title to Official Bulletin Board, should that be the language in these three?
We have.
I believe it's the Town Bulletin Board, also known as Official.
In the, in that definition.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we talked about that too.
And we did include in 6.2 the website.
Yeah.
Because realistically, you're not going to put a whole budget on the bulletin board.
Right, yes.
Add more.
Perfect.
Yep. All right, so that.
Do you want to discuss Article 14 that's submitted by the Charter Review Committee as well?
Momentarily. So first, want to make sure that there are no other questions regarding Articles 4 to 13 and any other comments that the Charter Committee want to make. Let's hope Town Meeting goes as easily.
Really will have gone home, right?
I was going to say to all three people sitting in the auditorium.
Seems of 100. 100 people stay for Town Meeting.
That's true, that's true. We can, I have not, I have not looked at it, so, but if you want to walk us through it, that, that would be great.
Sure, so Article 14 is, we haven't gotten to this, so, because our review was after this. Article 14 is in tandem with Article 3, which would consolidate the Highway Department and the Cemetery Department under a Department of Public Works. Town Council actually requires these changes. The Charter Review Committee did not want to add them into their article. They wanted to have it as a standalone article. So it's the same list from Article 12, maybe? From Article 9. With, so this would assume that Article 9 passed and the changes are made. And then the additional change is to strike Board of Cemetery Trustees, strike a Superintendent of Streets and replace it with the verbiage that is identified here that Town Council have drafted. This and Article 3 also requires a ballot question. My intention was to put Article 3 on the special election, but master general law requires it to be in an annual election. So these will also take effect after next year's ballot, should they pass. And they are, in essence, submitted by the Charter Review Committee because based on our charter, they are the ones who can make changes to the charter.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
The description of the Director of Public Works, the extra language who shall be vested with the powers of, did Town Council have any explanation for including that extra explanation? I'm mindful that this is, this is a list and so I didn't, and we didn't have that type of explanation for other positions. Was there a, a conversation that was had that could be shared about why that was put into there or did it just seem like the opportunity to explain?
No, it's because we still statutorily need to have cemetery duties carried out. And the options are make the Select Board the Cemetery Commissioners and assign those duties to the Director of Public Works or put it in the list and make it known that the person who fills the role of Director of Public Works will in essence be the Cemetery Commission and the Superintendent of Streets in one position.
That helps. So it's mostly that in order to do it differently, you'd have to include additional language or an additional charter change.
Yes.
It's, it's a good place to put it.
Yes.
Okay, that helps me to understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. You're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So how shall we approach the rest of the law?
I'm happy to just, there's only a handful of articles now, so I'm happy to just run through them. Article 1 is to incur the debt for the Neshova Regional High School building project at $241,714,926. That is Article 1. The Superintendent is planning to come to your next meeting to give an update on the project. But this is the article that came from the school through MSBA and the required verbiage that is needed. Article 2, which we have discussed, is additional funds for the renovation of the Randall Library. As I've said previously, the request is not to increase taxpayer contribution, nor is it to ask the taxpayers to fund this. I will incorporate this within my operating budget, likely over the next 20 years through a debt payment. But under municipal finance, Town Meeting has to authorize spending. So I need to ask Town Meeting to spend additional funding, not pay additional monies. So in order to get the project completed with escalation costs, the desire to go to a fully electric building and some of the HVAC components, there are additional costs. The Building Committee has made cuts. Quite frankly, as many cuts as can be made without compromising the additional programming space or the additional staff space or ADA compliance. At one point in the very recent past, we discussed eliminating the historic entrance as a way to save money and we took that off the table. To me, that's a non-starter. That's part of why we wanted to have this project is to bring back that historic entrance. So, so I have committed that I, due to the importance of this, this is the third attempt to get this project through. And quite candidly, the roof is, the ceiling is caving in in the building. I actually was afraid to reach out today with the rain to see what happened. Every time we have heavy rains, it just, it gets worse and worse. So I have committed funds through my budget. As I put in the notes, the maximum amount that the taxpayers will pay remains at what was authorized at the annual Town Meeting last year and through the ballot of 2022, which is $6,706,500. But it will extend the budget to about $11 million, like 10 million and change. This will give us, it actually brings it to 11.3, gives us like a little cushion just in case, so that we don't have to come back for any more money. But again, so this authorizes the additional spending and it authorizes a bond, not a debt exclusion. It is within Proposition 2.5 within the tax levy. Article 3 is the article to combine the Cemetery and Streets and Director of Public Works. So this was written by Town Council. There are a lot of different sections because it does impact our general bylaws. And actually, I need to strike zoning bylaw from that because we took out the zoning change. So you'll see that it affects, and some of it is just minimal. It just changes where it says Superintendent of Streets to Director of Public Works. It changes where it says Cemetery Commission or Cemetery Trustees to Director of Public Works. It, it really keeps, it, quite frankly, the way we've now been operating for three years is summarized here with the exception of we have had a Cemetery Committee voting on, you know, signing deeds, spending perpetual care funds. That will then vest those duties into the Director of Public Works. When it comes to perpetual care funds, it's in collaboration with the treasure collector who has authority for investments. But this change and as I just mentioned, the Article 14 is to solidify that. Questions on those three?
I had a quick question about, so the goal is to combine the two departments together.
Yes.
Given that, so it won't be till May 2024 until that's like.
Correct.
Okay. At that point, is that Brian will come back to us for a title change?
So I, I don't think you need to make a new appointment. I mean, we certainly could because it would be an annual appointment anyways. We could just change it at the, I don't know, was it the last meeting?
I may not have been here.
Yeah, so the board actually authorized Dolores and I to sign Cemetery Deeds and perform the duties. Okay, so, so the urgency for this was, I mean, we've been talking about it. I did not want to sort of rush through it to get it in the fall. My intention was next spring until we lost all but one Cemetery Committee member. So that's really the urgency is we've, it is a three-member committee. We've had two members, now we're down to one member. So again, we function this way with the exception of there has been a Cemetery Committee, you know, that meets once a month, taking votes on those few items. So, but yes, this would not take effect until after the ballot in May of 2024, if it passes.
Correct. That was my only question.
Article 15, we'll jump ahead to 15 through the charter changes. Is the acceptance of the portion of Box Mill Road as a town way? We've obviously been discussing that over the last few meetings. This is to have Town Meeting actually authorize a public way. And Article 16 is a cleanup from the Municipal Modernization Act. The town currently follows the, an older statute that if someone is applying for a permit, quite frankly, in any department, the, they can check with the treasure collector to see if there's outstanding taxes. And if there are outstanding taxes older than a year, we can withhold those permits pending receipt of the funds. The Municipal Modernization Act changed the language that would allow us to do it soon, within a year. So if they have any outstanding taxes, we can then withhold their permit until they remit payments and bring their taxes current. So this is just to re-accept the statute with a new provision that strikes the section that says for not less than a 12-month period. And just gives us the ability to try and collect those funds sooner. And the last article is the special election ballot question. And that is the question that will be on the ballot. Folks, I know people have gone through this, but the question always comes up. Why is there no dollar amount on the ballot? This is state statute, there cannot be. This is what goes on the ballot. So people need to know when they're going to vote, what this actually means. And this would authorize Stowe's portion, which is about $64 million, that would authorize us to withhold from, in addition to the tax levy, the amount to pay the bonds for that, which at the current estimates is approximately $1,500 a year on the average tax, on the average value home, which is $640,000. Questions on any of those?
Sorry, and a yes vote means that you, we are agreeing with that?
A yes vote means you want to pay for the school.
Great. I'm telling you, it feels like a double negative and that does.
And that is the statutory language, to exempt from the provisions of Prop 2.5. So Prop 2.5 obviously stand the 2.5%. This exempts you from that and allows us to tax over that.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying, for the public.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
So this is obviously a draft. The Charter Review Committee is working on their summaries. I will provide you one for Article 14. And then Council, even though they wrote 90% of these articles, actually, I think 95% of the articles, they are still reviewing it just to go through one more check. So on our next, at our next meeting on the 22nd, you can review if you want to make any recommendations on articles, that would be the time. Otherwise, we would approve that and it goes to print the next morning. Because then it goes into the paper for the townwide circulation the following week.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we need to vote on that ballot question?
You do. You need to authorize the ballot, just on the election ballot question.
May I have a moment?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the Neshova Regional School District High School ballot question as presented at this meeting.
Second.
Further discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Right.
Great. Thank you.
That one lonely ballot question.
One lonely ballot question. Yep.
Just doing all the work. One little question.
Awesome.
So now a discussion of making Common Road a one-way in relation to the library project. So I'll just say at the beginning of this conversation that this is a discussion amongst us which would then lead to potentially having a public hearing to gather further feedback, a public hearing done by the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. So we're not voting on having Common Road become one-way right now.
Okay.
We are not. So comments from the board on this topic. Denise, do you want to?
May I?
Something?
Yes, so I just, I included some photos in your packet. I will just show them. I didn't really prepare anything. The chief is here. Actually, when I came to town prior to even the library project, he and I had spoken about Common Road and the concerns of, on a public safety matter with traffic speeding on that road. Anyone who's been to the library knows you pretty much come out of the library and spill out right onto the street. There is no entranceway. And if you need to take the ramp, good luck to you because the ramp is, there's no safety. You'd literally just come out right at the curb where people are flying around that corner. So just a few questions. I also, on our meeting tonight, is the, our project manager for the project. So if there are questions in relation to the project itself and how this would benefit the project, I'm happy to talk about that. Again, tonight, we're really just asking for your support to continue with the process and allow the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee to conduct a formal public hearing and gather feedback. But this is, as you can see, this is the current entrance of the library. The steps, you have very little room between the steps and the road. And I don't know if I can use my pointer here. Probably not because I'm in Adobe. But the ramp, oh, no, there we are. So the ramp is right here. It comes out. There is no, there is no sidewalk right here. You come out right at the crosswalk. And I mean, I can speak from experience, the way cars fly up that street or come around this corner here and take it very quickly to try and bypass the light. Just another view of quite frankly, how narrow the road currently is in relation to the building and where cars are parking. You will also see that cars park partially in the common, which we would like to speak about at some point, about taking those few feet of the common and actually making it a formal curve and lined parking so that people stop parking up on the grass deteriorating that area farther than it is. Here's just a basic site plan of what it looks like. So this is the current structure. Again, you can see how narrow that roadway is with the, with cars there and the building. So picture cars parked, two-way traffic. Again, this is the current layout. There is no formal sidewalk here. You are just walking along the curb and into the building. So if you're walking, cars are driving and cars are parking, it is almost impassable in that stretch. This is just a small overall site plan of what the potential new layout will be. The red is the existing building. The rest of it is what the goal would be. So the goal would be to actually put a formal sidewalk from the parking, a long common road into what would be an entry plaza. So you actually have some room to come in, go into the library, come out of the library without going right onto the road. The sidewalk would continue around and connect all the way over to Crescent Street. Our intention would be to have a raised walkway, so a speed table, if you will, that will slow cars down and allow for a more inviting space between the common and the library. You know, you don't see a lot of people in the common. You don't see a lot of people enjoying that space. Ideally, you could make it almost feel as one, have some benches there, have people be able to sit across the street, maybe read a book, sit in front of the library and read a book. Currently, just the way that the cars and the traveler, it just, it's, it feels like, you know, it's a little harrowing to sort of cross the street there. It's, it's just not a great area. This is what, so this is just a overall view of what the new site plan would look like. So you could see where the sidewalk would come out. And again, how that is in relation to the street and cars parking. And then I think.
So Denise.
Yep.
These renditions right now don't show the changes for the parking, the marked arcing.
They do not.
At this point in time. So if, I understand it correctly, if those changes are instituted, it will widen the roadway because the cars are going to be moved off of it.
Yes, so it will, yes and no. It would sort of shift it a little bit because we would still be taking up part of the roadway for a sidewalk. So we would actually have a sidewalk and then yes, the goal would be to have two or three feet of the common to then extend it that way. So that you could put in definitive lined parking spaces.
And you feel that, and that's going to be enough room even as a one-way street then?
So I, I mean, I would defer to the chief. I think we have, I mean, currently cars park there now. But I would, I would have you weigh in on that.
Are you finished with your presentation?
So I just had the, I mean, just the last visual is sort of to show people using the library, having some space. This is the sidewalk here that's sort of the white line. So you can see pedestrians, bicyclists, and then, you know, one lane of cars going by. Because again, we, we want, the goal would be to make it an inviting building, to be able to use the grounds as well as the building. And in the current layout, it's just, it's the site, the lot is so tiny, it doesn't leave a lot for us to do there. So having this sort of courtyard give some outdoor space as well as indoor space. And now I will turn it over to you.
Can you answer a very basic question?
Sure.
Which one way is it going?
From, well, that's a basic question.
There you go.
This is the thought process and I'll, I'll take you through my thought process and hopefully I can answer that question as I go through. So this making Common Road one-way has been on as a safety thing for me for well before the library project. It is, people use it as a cut through. They tried to cut from the lights down. You have the church, you have the library usage, you have the children's school there. So there is a lot of usage for that road. People do park on both sides. We've tried to enforce the, the speed limit down there, which is be twenty-five miles an hour. We've, the traffic safety has tried all of our calming mechanisms. We've tried to really go and do what we can without coming to like the big, like the big solutions here. The opportunity to change it though, because it's going to be a learning curve, right, for people. It's going to like change. But the, I looked at it from, well, the library project is happening. It's going to be closed. Common Road will be closed by the library if the project goes through for a couple of years. So when we reopen it, why not have it reopened in a safer way? So the one-way, to answer your question, would be westbound, which is west of the, now I'm going to use some, I don't know if it's the right name, but the carriage road, the carriage house entrance of the church, that side from Great Road towards Library Hill. But it wouldn't take effect until west of that church entrance.
Oh, perfect.
So, so it would be the people who are using the church and parking by the carriage house, I don't know if I'm using that as the term.
Sure.
Would still, and the people who use the, the children's center would still be able to leave out onto Great Road. But everybody turning in would always still have to come in from Great Road. You would not be able to enter from Library Hill anymore. You couldn't cut the light anymore. And, and what happens now is you have cars that are parked some way, sometimes the right way, sometimes the wrong way, on the south side of Common Road. So that creates, you know, four to five feet of space that they're taking up. And then you have two, two cars, if it's a truck or if it's, you know, another car, you just don't have the room. Fire department has gone down and tested this way with their trucks. They feel that this is a safer direction as well too, turning in. You already still have the same amount of cars that are using the library, coming in from Great Road anyway. So if they're coming in from Library Hill, yes, they're going to have to go around and there'll be some additional traffic. But it's still going to be safer for people to exit the library, but also safer for people crossing the, the street there to use the common, just for people to be out walking. We have a lot of walkers. There are a lot of kids that come down and use, use the library and actually use the common that we see all the time after school. That they're out there by the memorial, they're out there studying, they're out, they're doing, using that area. I have seen cars going well over the speed limit. We've made motor vehicle stops out there, strong enforcement. It's, it, it didn't help. So we need, you know, as I always stated before, even though we got strong enforcement, it affects one person at one time. So even affecting all those people still didn't slow it down. So it's great happenstance that the library project is going to happen at the same time. But you know, if we're reconfiguring, if we're thinking about reconfiguring a road, which I've been trying to support before the library project, why not do it at the same time when the road reopens? Now it's one-way. So that is, you know, and I know you're not here to vote on that and I just prefer, it's, but that's to answer your question. A very long-winded way, I'm sorry.
That's a great answer.
And I think, you know, the goal as part of all of this would be that if you allow the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee to move forward with the public hearing and we continue down this process, obviously, as, as the chief alluded to, the plan would be to close that portion of Common Road during construction. We need someplace for vehicles and construction materials and whatnot. While that's going on, the planning department is taking on the traffic, the town center study project. So in my opinion, it's, we can say to them, we want to make this a one-way from this direction. Now tell us how to do that safely within the purview of the whole center. Do we need to make that entrance on Great Road a little bit wider? Do we need to make a, do we need to X out sort of like we do out here, even though it doesn't work, to allow people to take a left into Common Road so that traffic is not backed up? How can we make that work properly with the flow of traffic and with anything else that's being looked at in that general vicinity? Instead of saying to them, you know, we're thinking of this, how do we make it work? I think we need to say, we want this to happen. Tell us how to make it safe. Tell us how, the appropriate way to do it, what changes need to be made, what other considerations need to be taken into consideration? Because the goal is that would also be going along the same time that the project is going along, the same time that the road is closed. So when the time comes in, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months, to say everything's great and we're reopening, we now have a new traffic pattern. We may have a new light timing pattern based on the town center study. We have a new one-way. We have better stop signs, better crosswalks. So that it can all sort of be packaged in as one, even though they're different projects, but they all sort of feed into the same area.
Right.
And to continue this process, like to have the public hearing would give your butters, the neighbors, everybody a voice to say, you know, it's not just us coming down and saying that we're doing this. It at least gives them that opportunity to, to be heard. So that's, yeah, that's, I feel that's important.
That's great. Yes.
So my question is, I respect all the work that's been done on this to date, but I would just want to make sure that in continuing the exploration, we are not narrowing the discussion to just the one-way off of Great Road, that in fact, there will be discussion about having it go the other way too? I mean, are we, we're not closing the door on a one-way, the other way in this vote?
No, and quite candidly, for the project, it doesn't matter.
Right, for the project, it doesn't.
I think for safety, there may be other concerns with that, but for the project, our goal is to make, make it just safer.
Okay, I just want that, the whole, all the options.
Right.
Available for discussion. We're not precluding anything.
Yeah, there's been a lot of discussions still that have been happening. I mean, the idea of just close off Library Hill and Common. Right, that's been put out there. Just make it, you know, you have to come in off of Great Road and make that a parking area. I heard another one of close both ends off and then cut a path right through the common and make it like a T-intersection. So these, these are things that have floated out there. Doesn't mean that that's what we're going with, but you've got to take every, you know, you take all the ideas together.
Yeah, because I see pros and cons to the one you just described, but I'm not a traffic engineer.
And then again, this isn't a decision to, like, I'm not here saying for a traffic safety, this is what we're looking for. This is our recommendation at this time. This is like, we just keep going forward and keep going forward.
Great. I don't think she can see your hand.
Oh. Hi.
Comment?
Hi. I, as a parent whose children are the ones who frequent that, the library after school, I'm in strong support of looking into that. Middle schoolers are amazing. Their prefrontal cortexes are not fully developed and they will like legit just walk out into traffic. And especially, I have seen picking the kids up, like they just walk out, someone whips around the corner to get around another car. And so it's just, it's such a tight space there that I really appreciate you looking into that. But yeah, I, I'm fully into making that area safer because I, we love, I love the library. I love that they get so much out of it. But I also just would like them to be able to come home. Thanks. In one piece, yes. Come home in one piece.
So are we ready to vote on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Great.
Madam Chair, I move to support continued expiration of changing Common Road to a one-way street and allow the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, TSAC, to hold a public hearing on this issue to gather further feedback.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why did we have to take that vote? I mean, do we always tell a committee, you can continue to?
No, but, but this, so ultimately, the, the decision falls on the select board. And I had said to the chief, I didn't want to waste their time if at the end of the day you all were going to say, we don't want any part of this. So they've had, as I put in the memo, they've been talking about this for years and they're ready to hold a public hearing, but I wanted to get your feedback and thoughts before they did the go-ahead, just to make sure that you agreed that this is the right direction and that they should gather further information.
Okay, thank you.
Just like, um, what do we do? We change Marlboro Road, but then we have another one that you gotta, you change, oh, like the all-night parking for the snow. You are the responsible, you, you make the rules and traffic rules and regulations. So your decision is ultimately yours, as we just recommend. So, you know, we don't want to go, if you, if you're not, if you don't want to hear about it, then why, we were not going to put that effort into it. But, um, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Consideration has gone into that and all the supporting materials to make it clear. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Next, we are to consider approving an amendment to the Stowe Acres retained rights agreement.
So as I said in my memo, Stowe Acres had reached out to us and asked if they could extend the retained rights agreement on the additional holes on the north course for another year because the developer has not yet applied for his permit. So their, their intention is to go eventually to a nine-hole course. If we retained our, if we took possession in a year, they would lose like three holes. So Kathy and I spoke, we met with Stowe Acres. Quite candidly, while we're in the master planning process, there's nothing that we're going to do anyways until at least June, when the master plan is completed. Then we would need to go through what steps we're going to implement. We didn't really think that it was a big deal because we're really looking at six months. And quite frankly, we could get a few other items out of this negotiation. So we met with them. They agreed to these terms, which you'll see, some of them involve us having access to the course so that we can do our master planning process. And they were, because some of those are weekends and ideally, we would like to be on the whole course, which has been difficult with golf season. So they have agreed to three weekend days to allow us to take part in our activities. So they have agreed to, um, three weekend days to allow us to take part in our, um, activities. Um, they have agreed to hold a public meeting for when the master plan is completed, that we can present it at their property, um, with some food and refreshments available. Um, and they, um, are allowing us to work on, there is a, um, right, did we put in there the path? We'll have to see where we are.
Access.
Yes, the access path, um, yes, the vehicular access. So we'd like to start exploring how to get cars sort of into the middle of the course so that when we do acquire our portion of it and people wanna explore, how can we do that safely? So we wanna sort of work with them, um, over the next year to figure out how we can get a path in there that cars could drive on and not impact their golf operations for the, um, the length of this agreement. So, um, I ask for your support in approving this. Again, it's, we really don't feel that it's any impact to the project or us taking, um, possession of that property.
Any questions?
It seems like it's to our advantage from the negotiation.
Yeah.
Table. I mean, we hold the cards at this point, so.
Yes. Sounds great.
Great.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the amendment, the Stowe Acres retained rights agreement as presented at this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And now we can discuss minutes. Any comments on Joyce's excellent minutes? Thank you all.
Thanks.
Good night.
Uh, alright.
Oh, Kathy's got hers. Linda, Linda.
Oh, Kathy. No, Kathy's code.
Thank you.
Got it. There's something in the pocket she'll need.
Any, any comments on the minutes? No comments?
Nope.
I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three meeting as drafted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you, Joyce. Uh, any comments on correspondence?
I don't have any comments on the correspondence, but this is also for updates. I was just wondering
Yes.
Uh, when we might be putting back on the agenda the discussion, uh, for a policy, um, for other boards to be recorded.
Right, um, not yet.
Sorry, keep going. I'm trying to figure out what I wanna say. Keep going.
I don't know whether I wanna take this up before town meeting. Depend on, uh,
Well, I, I'm not necessarily saying that for the, our next meeting, we've got a lot already in the agenda that we're gonna be faced with.
Yeah.
Um, but I just don't want this to get lost or forgotten.
No, I think.
Because I do feel it's important, um, especially with some of the comments I've heard from, um, individuals who have attended, uh, other boards and, um, things that have been discussed that have not exactly been in their purview, et cetera. And I do feel that, um, our constituents have the right to know exactly how these boards and committees are operating. Um, and there should be a record set forth.
So we, I mean, again, we'll be looking at a policy that won't be enforceable across all the groups that meet as, you know, all of the groups of town employees, the, the volunteers that meet. Because we cannot dictate to elected.
Well, we can certainly ask them why they choose not to at that point in time.
We can make a policy and, and, uh, ask everybody to consider following it. That's, I mean, that's kind of, right, I mean, we don't have, you know, it's not a legally binding, you know, dictate, as it were. So I think myself, I would like to approach this in a way that is, if possible, that isn't highly confrontational. I'm not afraid of confrontation, but I would like to see if we can get consensus to, to be transparent rather than, you know, I'd rather start with a carrot than a stick. Personally.
Yeah.
I'm not viewing this as a stick.
Some will. That's my, that's my.
I, I agree with you. I would like to see this. I, I have things I would like to say about this, but I feel like we're skirting into, I just, I don't want it to be, well, cause what I would say, I would want on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, so, um, so I would request at some point in September or October that we have this conversation. Like John, things have been brought to my attention about other meetings that unfortunately, I've not had the opportunity to review or rebut because they're not out there. Um, and so I would like us to have a more formal discussion about that in the future, just because, um, yeah, I, I don't wanna get too far in the weeds right now, but I would feel like, um, it's not a gotcha thing.
I didn't get that.
Oh my God, it's not, I'm serious yelling at me. Uh, not like as a, a gotcha thing or in anything. I just, um, I'm a big proponent of transparency, especially on
Absolutely.
On this board, and I do feel like it is important that everyone can, can have, you know, comments. Um, so yes, that's my two sides. I'm done.
Right, and to follow along, not just transparency, but actual accessibility to the other boards and the committees and, and what's going on. Um, so that, um, you know, we've, we are required to present and it's a public record. And I don't see any reason, and I'm sorry if other people feel like this is a stick.
I'd like to comment.
Throwing out there, that's not what I'm trying to do at all. I've really been trying to put it out there for the point of transparency and for accessibility for all, all constituents, as well as ourselves, to be able to address the different issues or matters that may come up. Because not all of us, quite frankly, can, uh, attend every board and committee meeting. It's just not feasible.
They several meet when we're meeting, for one thing.
Right.
Yeah, I, I feel that, you know, I don't wanna confuse the open meeting law with the intent to be transparent. I mean, the open meeting law says that these meetings happen in public, they're noticed in a certain way, the agendas are posted, and there, um, there's still the possibility that they will always be on Zoom if the technology is available. Which I think is a huge step. Just making it accessible in that, in that new way creates the opportunity for people to attend meetings that, and that couldn't before. Um, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not arguing against doing this at all. I'm just saying that I don't think it's our responsibility to make meetings available in perpetuity. You know, and, and, or on YouTube. So I, I just wanna look at how this can be done so that it's, uh, sort of feels fair, uh, or so. I, let me just say this. I suspect there'll be pushback from some people who may not wish to, to have a recording of, you know, and I, and I, I think, you know, if I'm willing to say this now at a meeting, whether I've got a TV on me or not, you know, I, I should be willing to say what I'm willing to say because it is a public meeting, even if nobody's here.
Right.
So, if that makes any sense.
No, it sounds like.
It fully does.
It sounds like we'll be putting it on the agenda in the future.
Yes, I would love that.
I think that's a request.
So.
Yes, and that is a request to, to see if we can't get it on the agenda for September.
Yeah, let's start with a discussion and not have it, uh, necessarily be a vote.
Yeah. Right, well, I think, you know, the, the way we've been wording the agenda is discussion on a potential policy. So that it gives you the opportunity to have a discussion and then say, yes, we'd like to draft a policy. So that gives you just the opportunity to discuss it without the policy part of it.
That's good.
So we can put that on. Um, we are, the, that first September meeting, um, right before town meeting, we actually will be holding a formal public hearing on the consolidation of the highway and cemetery, cause that's a requirement.
Okay.
Um, we have some other things. So I think maybe the meeting after the special town meeting would be the next available cause we are quite full the next few. Um, you know, we have to do my review and all. You know, how much fun that is every year. Um, so the next two meetings involve goals and review and town meeting matters, so.
Yep.
Um, so I will put that as a placeholder on whatever that meeting is in September.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other?
I have a question that, um, the, the old gas station in the center of town, it's, driving by today, I figured it out, they're putting in a new septic system. But that, does that mean that that property's transferring?
Yes, so there is an application before the planning board, um, to make it, I believe, a car detailing, car wash location. Um, so they, they have been trying to get the application in, and I think they got it in before, um, the annual town meeting, cause they want it to be grandfathered under the zoning. So they are going through that approval process and they are hoping to move forward with that.
So does that mean the contamination issue is gonna be?
It was. Oh, oh, sorry, I was gonna say, cause I thought it was done with the gas, uh, the, the old gas station had been fully remedied, right? I, I don't know if there's a twenty-one, I really don't know where it stands, but, um, I, I would assume that since they are moving forward, that it's either.
There's a lot of people have been asking me and I'm like, I, I have no idea, so, it's like I thought I'd ask.
My understanding is there's a deed restriction on the land saying there will not be ever a gas station.
A gas station again, yeah.
Because of prior contamination. So because of the, the chain, I don't know, it's a legal, uh, chain back to prior owners or something, and so prior owners who cleaned up the
Right, do not wanna be.
Do not wanna be responsible again.
Because that's how the law works.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's something about the heirs of George W. Bush. Like, it's, it's like, it's this like very law, it's a weird, I'll find it and send it to you. But there is like something, the way that the law is written, it's very odd.
And then another update question. If, if, is Dunkin' Donuts moving into town or not?
So I believe they're still going through the process. They are having some difficulty with their well and DEP.
No.
So I'm not sure where it stands. The last time I checked in, I actually spoke with the property owner. He was confident that everything was gonna move forward, um, but I know that they were, I shouldn't say no. I believe they were trying to have DEP grandfather the well that was there, and I think based on the location, they will not. Um, and so that is posing a bit of a problem.
Alright. Those were my update questions.
That has to be a public, well, right.
Uh, so public water supply, I think it's twenty-five, um, people is what the limit is, so I, I would think so. Um, but given the lot size, I don't know that they have the space to put a public water supply, and I think that's the problem.
Okay, that's it for me.
It all comes to a head sooner or later.
Can I add an update?
Please.
I know I'm not a board member, but, um, I, I should have mentioned it in my, in my report. Uh, so there's been a lot of discussion around town about gun manufacturers.
Oh, yes, there has, right.
So next Tuesday, the, yes, next Tuesday, the fifteenth, the planning board is holding a public hearing on an application uh, for the Gleeson Dale Mill, that I think it's twenty or twenty-five art spaces and ten gun manufacturing spaces. Um, you know, I, at my open office hours last week, I had a number of folks come. Um, they seem to be, excuse me, under the, under, or belief that because our zoning is industrial in that location, that we support firearms, gun sales, gun manufacturing. Um, so I, I've tried to reiterate, this is not a town position. This is, the zoning allows it. We cannot, we cannot mandate. It's not like alcohol or marijuana that you can say, we don't want it in town. Excuse me. Are there things that we could potentially do in the future? Yes, um, you could put parameters, just like the planning board could put parameters on the application. Um, the chief, uh, I've had conversations with him, um, and, and what he said, these manufacturers, um, under ATF requirements, uh, anyone manufacturing firearms needs a brick and mortar address for their ATF process. Um, and that the application is actually a hundred and fifty square feet per unit. I mean, we're talking like cubicles. It's a desk and a chair and a computer. Uh, that ninety-nine percent of the time, there's no manufacturing actually taking place there. There's no, they're doing that at their home, but they need an office to actually register their business. So I, I just wanted to state again, we, it's not something that we are, have advocated for. It's not something that we have reached out and invited these folks. Um, it is a business owner. They are trying to rehabilitate the mill. Um, but our current zoning is zoned industrial and manufacturing is allowed under industrial zoning. So the planning board is having a public hearing. I encourage anyone who has questions to at least go and hear what's taking place. Um, I think, you know, whether or not the planning board has enough information to, you know, discuss it fully next week, or if they would continue it for more information, obviously, that would be up to them. But this is not something that the town has said, hey, come here to our mill. Um, so I just wanna make that clear, um, and encourage folks. Uh, people wanted to come to me, they wanted to come here. Since it's a planning board, unfortunately, we have nothing, we have nothing we can do with this. Um, Senator Eldridge has been posting stuff about it on Facebook. His, excuse me, legal counsel sent me some information on the bylaws that other towns have passed. Uh, again, it's not unlike the car detailing place, um, they have applied under the current zoning. So not sure how you can go back and retroactively change the zoning. Um, so we'll see how this transpires, we'll see what takes place. But I wanna encourage folks, this is not about selling guns. Um, despite what I've heard, this isn't about people coming here at midnight and illegally buying black market firearms. Um, this is not about anything other than they need a location to file their business. So, um, if anything else takes place there, then we can certainly enforce it if the permit goes forward. But there's, you know, other than the planning board's parameters and what they can decide, there's not a lot the town is itself can do. So I just wanted to make that point, cause I'm, I would assume you're getting phone calls and comments on it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me.
That's helpful. Thank you. Any other items? Anyone?
No.
One last motion then?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Alina?